Good morning. We will call the October 5th, 2021 City Council Meeting Order. And I have our invocation and pledge led by Councilman Gary Pickens. If you would, please stand.
You will join me in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we want to thank you for all the blessings you have bestowed upon this city. Please watch over our first responders here in the city and the men and women who serve this nation in uniform. Watch over us, watch this great city and help it continue to grow and keep us safe. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item three is roll call. And Sam, you'll see the council members present with the exception of council members Taylor, McKelvey, and Pretty. And before we get on to item four, I think Councilman Buchanan recognized him. I think he said he has a word or two. Councilman Buchanan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is Ms. Layloni here? Ms. Layloni present?
She is not.
Mr. Chris?
Now, they're working.
Okay. Health and sanitation, I want to recognize because the last three weeks, they're cleaning up for Lane College Homecoming. Brought in over a hundred claw piles, over a hundred claw piles. And they're looking, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, they're looking for three claw pile workers.
I believe that's right. Three or four, yeah.
Okay. And all the claw trucks working?
No. I think at the most, we have six on the street. Sometimes it's four.
What about the new ones?
The new ones won't be here till March.
Okay. All right. And I think, and I was gonna give them a standing ovation, but they're not praying. So I think they deserve a lot of credit. And as we speak, yeah, they were working because there are fourteen claw piles on Hayes Avenue this morning as we speak. Now, there will always be claw piles, but we must, as a city, get them up. Four-two-five-eight-five-four-five is the number to call. And if you can't get them, keep trying. Four-two-five-eight-five-four-five is health and sanitation number. We have another nugget on this. It's called "I Hate Litter." Judge Anderson has been doing "I Hate Litter," litter pickup for twenty years. And Judge Anderson deserves a lot of credit for his litter pickup up and down, up and down the streets of Jackson and on the highway, Judge Anderson. And it's called "I Hate Litter." All right?
Yes, sir.
And since none of them here, we won't give no standing ovation.
Well, tell them we gave them a standing ovation. I'll relay the message to them, Councilman. I appreciate that. They do work hard and they have been short-staffed for some time and working to fill those staff positions and short on equipment as well.
And we need to tell people to go to personnel to fill those staff positions.
Yeah, HR on the third floor of City Hall.
Okay. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Item four is approval of the minutes. September 7th, 2021 Council meeting. I believe those minutes were sent out, so if there's no additions or corrections, those will stand approved as read. Item five, proclamations. We do have one proclamation. I'll head down there. Domestic Violence Awareness Month. You all want to come up?
If y'all want to just line up right here in front of the council, it'll be fine.
So the proclamation reads, whereas there were 1,363 domestic violence reports in Jackson-Madison County in 2020, whereas forty-five percent of reported crimes against persons in Jackson-Madison County involve domestic violence. Whereas Jackson-Madison County reported four victims killed by a domestic partner in 2020. Whereas domestic violence can include verbal, emotional, financial, financial and physical abuse, as well as confinement, intimidation, isolation, and threats. Whereas the abuse of a family member can have a long-term damaging impact on survivors and their children that impacts families, friends, and the community at large. Whereas families are indispensable to a stable society and should be a place of support to instill responsibility and values in the next generation. Whereas domestic violence is widespread and devastating to society as a whole, but particularly to women and children. Whereas the problem of domestic violence is not confined to any group or groups of people, but crosses all economic, racial, gender, educational, religious, and societal barriers and is sustained by societal indifference. Whereas the survivors of domestic violence should have help to find the compassion, comfort, and healing they need. And domestic abusers should be held fully accountable for their crimes against persons and the community. Whereas our community has a civic and moral obligation to work to prevent domestic violence and to address its brutal and destructive effects and to make ending domestic violence as a community priority. Whereas Jackson-Madison County is unique in West Tennessee with the Family Justice Center, the Safe Hope Center, where victims and survivors can meet in one place with organizations and entities, including RAP, Jackson Police Department Domestic Violence Investigation, District Attorney's Office, and West Tennessee Legal Services. Now therefore, we, Scott Conger, Mayor of the City of Jackson, and Jimmy Harris, Mayor of Madison County, do hereby proclaim October 2021 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Can Prince send this proclamation to you, Gypsy?
Yes. And everyone else, yes. We appreciate the support that we receive throughout the community from the City of Jackson and Madison County as we work to end domestic violence in our communities. Because domestic violence is a hidden problem and it's characterized by silence. Silence by those who suffer, silence by those around them, and the silence of the people that perpetuate abuse. Because it's very corrosive. It impacts women, children, and men who carry the burden of shame with them. And that shame can lead them to not seek help and not look out for the resources that are available to them, not only in this community, but in the other areas in which they live. As the mayor pointed out with the proclamation, I think it's worth noting that forty-five percent of the crimes against individuals that are committed in this community involve domestic violence of some sort, and that is a number that should be much lower. But thankfully, as we partner with survivors to give them the tools and the resources and the help that they need, they also have the help of the Safe Hope Center and the resources that are available there. And we've got representatives from West Tennessee Legal Services, the Jackson Police Department, the Safe Hope Center, and RAP here. And we could not do it without the coordination of these entities. So again, we appreciate the support of the Safe Hope Center and the work that's done here. Thank you.
All right, item six is invitation for public comment. So any item under first reading. With the exception of items six and seven, I have an opportunity for public comment. And at that time, when those items are called, you can raise your hand and be recognized then. First reading. Item one is a proposed budget amendment for street department equipment in the amount of $11,993.
Good morning.
Good morning, Bob.
The street department was budgeted $135,000 for a particular piece of equipment. They need an additional $11,993 to purchase the piece of equipment that they need. So this is a budget amendment in the capital ally fund that we're just simply transferring budgeted funds from another line item to the street department line item so that they can move forward with their equipment.
Move the approval.
Second. I have a motion in a second. This is an item on first reading, so I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of, or opposition to? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Harvey, okay. Motion passed unanimously.
Item two is proposed budget amendment funding for a public defender in the amount of $66,402.70.
Sure. The council recently approved local funding for the gang prosecutor position in the Attorney General's office. Subsequent to that, we learned that Tennessee Code Annotated requires that when local funds are increased for the Attorney General's office, that there is a like funding increase at a seventy-five percent level for the public defender's office. So this budget amendment would approve that additional funding that's required for the public defender's office.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. This is an item on first reading, so I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of, or opposition to, be recognized. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed, six-zero.
All right, item three is a proposed budget amendment for municipal maintenance insurance recovery in the amount of $10,500.
So moved.
Have a motion in a second. This is an item on first reading. Open the public hearing. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed, six-zero.
All right, item four is a proposed budget amendment for the Love Your Block Grant in the amount of $50,000.
What is Love Your Block Grant?
Lauren Kirk is gonna come up and explain a little bit about the Love Your Block Grant.
Morning, Council, Mayor.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So this grant we received, it is a two-year grant, so $50,000 for this year, $50,000 for next year. Thirty thousand of that will be used to hire a fellow. We've been advertising that position through HR. Justin Sircy, who couldn't be here today, is managing this program. And then the other $20,000 for this year can be given out to the community for mini-grants. So most communities, they give around $1,000 to $2,000. And it's for community cleanup projects, like you mentioned earlier. Murals, pocket parks, things like that. So just ways for us to support our community and making our community nicer.
I have a question. Those mini-grants will be distributed through Justin's office?
Yes. So he will put together a review committee for that, and that will come later on. Right now, we're trying to hire.
Much further down the road.
Yeah, this year, we have to hire the fellows first and then we'll go through that. All right, any other questions?
Move the approval.
We have a motion in a second. This is an item on first reading, so I'll open the public hearing. And I'll close the public hearing now. Have a first motion in a second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed, six-zero.
Thank you, Lauren. Item five is proposed budget amendment for Jackson Police Department Compensation Proposal in the amount of $1,021,868.64.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, couple of motions and a second. This is an item on first reading. So open the public hearing. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed, six-zero.
All right, item six, consideration of an ordinance to amend the text in the official zoning ordinance of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, Article Five, Specific District Regulation, Section 13, SC One, Planning Unit Commercial Development, District C, uses permitted. Column Stan to give us a report on that.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This item was presented to the Planning Commission at their last meeting and they are recommending it to you. This is again our effort to try to look at options to help our retail areas. That as retail is changing, we're seeing stores that are taking less footprint. So we have buildings that are becoming vacant, and so we're just trying to get ahead of that. And most of our commercial districts allow for residential in commercial districts, but the SC One doesn't, which is our shopping center district. So we're just basically amending our zoning text to allow residential in those zones. And it'll still be reviewed by the Planning Commission, and we'll still look at all the things we look at. But it will allow for the conversion of commercial buildings to residential if that plan comes forward.
Move to adopt the ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. So this, the public hearing will be on the next reading. And so any further discussion, questions from council?
I have a quick question. Stan, will this promote also mixed use in those areas, commercial and residential?
Most of those areas do have mixed uses in them already. This just allows, adds residential to that. So it'll just give us better options going forward.
Okay, thanks.
All right, any other questions? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed, six-zero.
All right, item seven is consideration of an ordinance to rezone property located at 2823 Old Madonna Road from AO Agriculture Open Land District to SC One Plan Commercial District comprising thirty-eight point eight acres, more or less. And thus also we'll have the public hearing at the second reading.
Again, this item was presented to the Planning Commission at their last meeting and they are recommending it to you. This property is located in the northwest quadrant of the Campbell Street and I-40 interchange. This is, the zoning class being asked for is the zoning class we use for our interchanges. It's SC One, it's our shopping center district. It allows for us to have some pre-development review of the development plans so that we can make sure that it's, you know, it's a good development, a good design, because these are gateways into our community. The plan for this property, the preliminary plan that was submitted to Planning Commission is they plan to operate a RV sales area. And we are looking forward to having that use in our community. And as they move through the permitting process, we'll review that more in depth for all the things that we review. But they are leaving a buffer along the residential parts that have joined them. And they are staying off the creek that's to the west of their property and leaving that undeveloped. So we feel good about the preliminary plan that we've seen.
Move the approval.
Sir, I have a motion in a second. Any questions, additional discussion from council? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed, six-zero.
Thank you.
Item eight is a consideration of an ordinance to amend the text of the Procurement Code.
Morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Purchasing is lowering the limits for sealed bids and proposals from $25,000 to $10,000 to meet state limits. This will bring more competitive prices to the city and bring in more bidders for upcoming city projects.
All right, any questions for council?
You got the clinic.
I don't.
This is an item, this is an item on first reading, so I'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of, or opposition to? Be recognized. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And do I have a motion?
So moved.
There, second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed, six-zero.
All right, second reading. Item one is consideration of an ordinance to amend the text of the official zoning ordinance of the City of Jackson to eliminate minimum parking requirements.
So moved.
Second.
A motion in a second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed, six-zero.
Item two is a consideration of an ordinance to rezone property located at 1984 South Highland Avenue from RG One, General Residential District to B5 Highway Business District comprising of 0.31 acres and more or less.
So moved.
Have a motion, there, second?
Second.
Second, any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Harvey, you're voting no? No. Motion passed, six-zero.
Item three is consideration of an ordinance to rezone property located at 1932 Hollywood Drive from RS Single Family Residential District to I-2 Light Industrial District comprising of 10.5 acres, more or less.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed, six-zero.
All right, item four is consideration of an ordinance to close and abandon Vanden Street. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed, six-zero.
All right, item five is a consideration of proposed budget amendment for insurance recovery for the fairgrounds in the amount of $13,500.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed, six-zero.
Item six, consideration of a proposed budget amendment for insurance recovery for grounds keeping in the amount of $93,530.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed, six-zero.
Item seven is consideration of a proposed budget amendment for JAG Grant for JPD in the amount of $79,538.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed, six-zero.
Item eight, consideration of a proposed budget amendment for PSN Grant for JPD in the amount of $36,448.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Ernest Isabstaining, motion passed, five-one. Did you change your vote first? Okay, six-zero then.
Item nine is consideration of a proposed budget amendment for Financial Empowerment Center Implementation Grant Match in the amount of $160,000.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed, six-zero.
Item ten is consideration of a proposed budget amendment for the Jackson Fire Department Compensation in the amount of $698,478.93.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed, six-zero.
Item eleven is consideration of a proposed budget amendment for trash for cash in the amount of $25,000. Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed, six-zero.
All right, new business. Item one is Community Economic Development Commission Visit Jackson Annual Report. Columnist Lori Nunner to give that.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, and guests. First of all, we're really thankful to be here today. We have had quite a year along with everyone else. But let me tell you, things are moving, continuing to move in the right direction. As the mayor mentioned, we're with Visit Jackson, Tennessee. We are the destination marketing organization for the City of Jackson and Madison County. So our goals are to market the city and the county as a destination, not only for overnight stays, but for day trips. Over the past year, we saw about a decrease of about twenty-three percent from the prior year. We have found that those visitors did find our community very attractive compared to going to the larger cities. So we didn't suffer as much as what you would say Nashville or Memphis did. Our board at the Community Economic Development Commission is five commissioners. They are appointed alternately by the city and the county. They include Chairman David Bratcher, Esther Mylum, Jane Alderson, Mel Patel, and Brad Little. We recently had, Jimmy Exum has served a long term on our board and has recently stepped down from that. We are thrilled that Mel was able to come on board and give us more of a perspective from the hotels for our board members. We continue to work to market Jackson, and that is done a lot of different ways. When I started this job in 2009, basically we bought a few ads here and there with our $193,000 budget. And then we took the calls, we fulfilled the visitor guide requests, and we were busy. Had no idea, this many years later, that we'd be as busy as we are. From social media and even with the downfall of Facebook yesterday, it is crazy busy for us. We continue to work on the Great Wolf Lodge project, and we appreciate the partnership and collaboration with the city, the county, and the Jackson Chamber on that project. Our world is changing, and it's changing rather quickly. We are looking to hire another person in our office. We had to downsize during COVID and let one person go, but we are hoping to add that person, add another position back. We do this not only because of the volume of business that we're seeing coming through our doors, but also anticipation of the Great Wolf Lodge. We need to be able to hit the floor running. I need to get somebody in and somebody trained soon so that we continue to move this business forward. We are funded through the hotel motel tax collections. It is a five percent tax that's added to your hotel stay here in Jackson and Madison County. Out of that money that is generated, forty percent goes to the city's general fund, forty percent goes to the county's general fund, and then we operate off the remaining twenty percent. When I started this job, we were at a cap at a budget of $193,000. In 2019, that number had increased our funding for our office alone, probably about the 350 area, about $350,000. So far this year, we are on track to surpass that number, which is really good news. But that can all change in a blink of eye, in a blink of an eye. And so we are being very conservative, as we were last year. We're continuing that conservative nature in our spending. On the third page of our packet, you will see a budget that was approved by our commission, the Community Economic Development Commission. And we bring that forward to you today, just so you're aware of what's going on. As part of our bylaws, we need to present that to both the city and the county. What's gonna happen to us over this next year? If things continue on this pace, we will expect to see record growth. Record growth with less employees. Workforce is a huge challenge for our organization right now. It is a huge challenge for our hoteliers, our restaurateurs, our retail operations, our events. It is hitting us all hard, and we need to consistently work to see how we can solve that challenge. The hospitality industry jobs, although people look at those as low-paying jobs, that's really not the truth. They are starter jobs, but people have the ability, based on their ambition and their hard-working ability, to work their ways up. Prime example is me. I started out as a server. Actually, I started out in a flower shop doing events, picking the pollen off of flowers and putting mayonnaise on ficus leaves to clean them up at 3:15 an hour. Now, I'm not gonna tell you how much I know, although, how much I make today, although that's public record. But I will tell you that the hospitality industry has given me great opportunities to advance from that first job to waiting tables, to managing operations, to working with downtown development, to the current position today. There is growth and opportunity in hospitality and tourism like no other industry. And so much of that work is tied to our efforts and our passion to grow. In our budget, you will see that there's approximately $30,000 in grants that are awarded. That is an application process that happens annually. We are taking a really close look at that because, as you know, funding programs, funding projects or special events is a very, a very challenging field. It's hard to know where's the best place to put that money. So we are working on a statewide level with the Governor's Task Force for Tourism on Economic Impact calculators to make sure that we're evaluating things consistently. We hope to have that program implemented by the end of this year so that when we take in the grants next year, that we'll be able to use that process to get a good feeling for how the grants should be awarded consistently. I guess the last thing I would leave you with is we, if nothing else, we are growing. We are continuing to grow. This started with the chance that the city and the county took on us. I wouldn't say it was a chance. I'd say it was a good bet that we were gonna grow this business. And with the help of the city and the county, we have continued to do that. We moved from twelfth in the state as far as the tourism economic impact indicators to tenth in the state. And that alone is significant considering where we are, our staffing levels, and our annual budget. So moving from twelfth to tenth, we look to push that number up. We got it, we're catching up to Clarksville. And I would say with a community our size, being able to catch Clarksville is a pretty good thing. They have a budget for their tourism office of over $1.2 million. They have nine full-time staff members and two part-time staff members. And we have a budget of probably be around $400,000 this year, and we have two staff members. We are challenged that way. We've got to continue to grow this industry, and we will with your help and your support. I'll be happy to entertain any questions that you may have for us.
Thank you, Lori. Any questions for Lori?
I have a question, if I may, maybe a couple. But Lori, on a given weekend, how many hotel rooms do we have? And I'm sure, you know, it's kind of a regional thing too, but do you have, I mean, just a rough guess?
It fluctuates so much. We have over twenty-eight hotels with, I think, two more in strong development phases right now. It varies from weekend to weekend depending upon the events. You know, last weekend, we had Lane College Homecoming, which was tremendous impact, the sportsplex. You know, it varies so much. So the occupancy rates vary per weekend, per month. And I would say overall, I think they- And I would say overall, I think they evaluate at about a sixty to seventy percent occupancy if you took over the course of the year.
Okay, and with that being said, what size conventions are we able to attract? And I guess the flip side of that is, what what size conventions are we not able to handle because of the current infrastructure?
That's a great question. Our challenge with conventions is that we have one, what we would call a full-service hotel, being able to have meeting room space and food and beverage. So but their capacity is about two hundred and fifty with seated round tables in there. And so when they're booked, it, we're done. So as we look at the Great Wolf Lodge project, as we look at the future, we definitely could benefit from more meeting room space in Jackson. The market right now is a little ticky because of COVID. So I think if we, as we ride this out, and what that looks like in the future, we'll be able to tell better. I think one of our greatest needs, if you were going to say, is looking at the assets that we have in this community. You don't want to put all of your eggs in that one basket. So developing the outdoor sites, like the Middle Fork Bottoms Project, the the rockabilly trails out, out north. I mean, we need to develop outdoor assets, having put-ins along the river for kayaking. There's great opportunities for what we do in tourism. It's not just that typical, oh, you have one attraction, you have one Graceland that you go to. We need to spread that around. And we are fortunate in Jackson because we have like forty locally-owned restaurants, we have twenty-eight hotels, we have a wide variety of activities, we have the sportsplex. That wide mix helps us, but we can always use more attractions and assets.
So so in your opinion, the challenge isn't the number of hotel rooms, it is creating more opportunities?
Absolutely, absolutely. When we have more opportunities here, the people will come, when there are more things to do, like the festivals and the events. They are what drive us at this present time.
So so have we kind of given up on the convention?
Absolutely not, absolutely not. I think what we have to do right now is pause and look at it. A convention center is very important to us, a meeting room space that has to be flexible. I would never take it off the table, but I think with COVID and everything that's going on, we need to pause for a moment and just and look at all of our assets and try to diversify as much as possible.
And last question, with with that current situation, are are most many cities doing that, pausing and not, I guess, not moving forward as quickly with the traditional convention center hotel? Because that's the model.
Yeah, I would, I would think so. I think you have to look, you know, Nashville and Memphis, because of their size and the convention market bottoming out, were were just, the impact was.
People couldn't go.
Yeah, it was substantial. And what makes Jackson attractive is that smaller market. So I think, I think we're in a good position right now. I don't think we ever take anything off of the table that we're always constantly evaluating.
Thank you. We appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
All right, you have other questions for Lori? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, item two is consideration of a consulting contract with Cruck Strategies for Tennessee General Assembly and Executive Branch. Mr. Reed gives an update on that.
Hey, good morning.
Good morning.
We've been working on this probably about six months. It started through the budget, budget process where we identified a need for an outside person in Nashville to sort of assist us with legislative matters, help us with funding, influence, relationship building, things of that nature. And we've gone through a long process, and we worked with our state legislators, and we have come up with a gentleman by the name of Matt King. He served as the chief of staff to the former lieutenant governor and has a long career in this and has been doing this a long time. And I I think he would do well for us. I mentioned at the last meeting, we do have lobbying efforts through the municipal league. But there are instances in the legislature where it might be Jackson versus another city, and in that situation, the municipal league would stay out of it. So we're we're very hopeful about this. There's a special session coming up that they're talking about for incentives having to do with the mega site. And I'm hoping that you all will approve this so that we can get started and join cities like Nashville, Memphis, Chattanooga, Knoxville, Maryville, Murfreesboro, Franklin, and Brentwood.
I move the approval.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion pass, six zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item three is consideration of a consulting contract for engineering service for Great Wolf Lodge Access Road.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second? Any questions, discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion pass, six zero.
All right.
Thank you.
Item four is an authorizing resolution, West Tennessee Healthcare Debt Restructure.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second?
I still need to hear it.
Not yet.
That's that's next. I was just saying, I still want to hear it.
You want to hear their proposal of debt restructure? Okay, all right, y'all come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wallace.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Jeff Blankship and Mr. James Ross.
The resolution we're asking for today is related to the district's debt. West Tennessee Healthcare is the Jackson Madison County General Hospital District. All of our debt is issued on hospital revenues. It's not a general obligation of the city or the county, but as the owners of the district, the city and the county have to approve any action we take with respect to our debt. And so the resolution you have would authorize the district to refund and issue a bond anticipation note. And we would use the proceeds of that note to pay off a certain portion of our outstanding debt and refinance that. All of the actions we're taking today are part of a bigger response to bring some needed services to the community. Jay, we want to talk about those.
We've been very blessed to, even in the midst of the pandemic, to have brought on board or prepared to bring on board some services that this community has never had before. Many of you heard about the Labana relationship that we are creating. And Labana will be operating our third floor pediatric floor in its entirety. It will be Labana that's doing that. They will also eventually take over and run our neonatal unit. As some of you came to the ribbon cutting, we expanded our neonatal, we renovated some older space. And we're the only tertiary care level neonatal unit between Memphis and Nashville. So we're taking care of a lot of premies from all over West Tennessee. To make that happen, the space that they will be using is a space that was in the past allowed by us with certain bonds to to happen. As Jeff has mentioned, he'll go into a little bit deeper. The second thing that you probably have not heard about, that we're really excited about, is being able to have a long-term acute care hospital come inside of Jackson Madison Hospital. So Labana will be on the third floor. We are taking the fifth and sixth floor of the old North Tower, or as we call it today, the C Tower. Today, that space is office space for case management and infection control providers. But we will bring a company called Select Specialty into our hospital. And the service that they will provide is is a post-acute service where they're really specialized in helping chronically ill patients get better. Critical but chronically ill. So an example is someone that's on the ventilator. If we had this company particularly right now in the midst of COVID, a lot of our patients are just lingering on the ventilator. We have had struggles, and we continue to work very diligently to get them off that ventilator. But a lot of them, just like other hospitals, we're not subsidiary or whatever to any other facility, but a lot of other hospitals are having this same issue. Today, to take care of those patients, we ship them to Memphis to Select Specialty or to Nashville to Select Specialty. What we're wanting to do is bring Select Specialty inside of our hospital on the fifth and sixth floor. They have the specialists, physicians, and therapists to really work, and they have certain protocols to really work to get these patients off the ventilator. And so we believe that these two things that we've been able to hopefully negotiate and with your approval bring to the citizens of Jackson and Madison County will really take our healthcare system to another level. But to make that happen, we need to change the structure of some of our bonded debt. And I'll let Jeff share with you that process.
Yeah, so as I said, in order to do that, we have about three hundred and fifty million of outstanding debt, all issued as municipal governmental bonds. And we'll be with the first resolution, taking a bond anticipation note for ten million dollars to to feed some of that old debt in order to remove the restrictions related to the Select Specialty arrangement that JR described.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Is four and five together?
No, sir, this is. Now, we have an authorizing resolution on four, and then we have the the TEPF hearing at five. So we approve the authorizing resolution first, if you decide to do so, and then we'll have the TEPF hearing following that.
Okay, I move that we authorize the resolution.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Harvey, six zero.
All right.
Thank you.
Item five is a TEPF hearing. This is a public hearing to consider the proposed reissuance of taxes and bonds by the city for certain federal income tax purposes. The proceeds of the bonds were used by the Jackson Madison County General Hospital District for the purpose of financing and refinancing the cost of acquiring, constructing, renovating, and equipping and otherwise improving certain healthcare facilities of the district located in the city of Jackson.
Now, that's what you was talking about, right?
Yeah, both of these.
Yeah, they they go together, two separate ones. The public hearing regarding the finances required by federal law. The public hearing is now open. We will hear from any persons who wish to speak about the proposed financing. Someone wish to speak about the proposed financing? All right, hearing none. Were there any written comments on the proposed reissuance of taxes and bonds or the projected project received by the city clerk prior to this hearing?
Move the adoption.
Have a motion and a second? Counsel, please vote.
Motion pass, six zero.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Counsel and Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to say thank you from the seventy-two hundred employees with West Tennessee Healthcare for you all's support. Past eighteen months, two years, it's been a difficult time, just as everyone has experienced. But healthcare has been, you know, it's kind of special to us, near and dear to us, and it has been a very, very difficult time. But we appreciate you all's support so very, very much. We apologize because we haven't been able to get together as much and share some of the great things that are going on in our health system.
You've been a little busy, though.
But hopefully, hopefully in the days and weeks, months, we'll be able to do that.
Thank you.
Mr. Trump.
Yes, sir.
I think that, well, I know that West Tennessee Healthcare is one of the finest healthcare institutions in the state of Tennessee. And 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 we appreciate them very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think at this time, I think we should stand up and give you all a standing ovation for, yes, sir, because what I've done over the years has been very hard, I mean, with your staff. And, you know, it's it's been very hard for our city, but you all have stood the test of time and made a difference in our community. So will y'all please stand with me, please?
On behalf of our board of trustees and seventy-two hundred employees, thank you all.
All right, before we get to item six, I wanted to remind the council and the and the new members, no later than eighteen months prior to the next election, we have to form a review committee for the mayor and and council salary review. That committee has to meet and report back to the council no later than fifteen months prior to the next election. And so this is nineteen months prior to prior to the next election. So we'll be forming these committees to give them time to review the salary for both the council and the mayor. So item six is mayor salary review committee. Councilman Dodd, Councilman Pretty, Vice Mayor Taylor, Ryan Porter, and Landon Preston are on those committees, on that committee. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion pass, six zero.
Item seven is council review committee, and nominated as Caleb Meriwether, Charles Rom, Beth Kaufman, Angela Nelson Parks, and Vice Mayor Paul Taylor serve on that committee.
So moved.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second, I have a question, Mayor. For all of these, on on these two committees, these names came out of the mayor's office?
No, no, they were out of the mayor's office, recommendations from the vice mayor, and then I do recall there was, there's recommendations from the council that the vice mayor sent emails out asking for recommendations from the council as well. It's a breakdown of, have to go back and look at the charter now. I think for the council salary review committee, the mayor's office recommends three residents. From the mayor's salary review committee, the mayor's office recommends one resident. Vice mayor recommends two additional council members and a another resident. I think that's, if I remember correctly.
Thank you, Mayor.
Refresh the charter. All right, there, is there a motion, a second?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion pass, six zero.
All right, item eight is consideration of a resolution for the Hazard Mitigation Grant two thousand twenty-one. I'm calling Stacy Stone to present that.
Morning.
Good morning.
So this resolution is to approve the adoption of the updated Madison County Hazard Mitigation Plan for two thousand twenty-one. This is a plan that's updated every five years. It has been submitted to FEMA and TEMA, and they have determined it compliant. But they do require the city adopt the plan in order for them to issue the final approval. The approval of that would then allow the city to be eligible to apply for hazard mitigation grant funding if it became available. The goal of the hazard mitigation grant program is to reduce the risk to lives and property from national hazards by providing that funding once a a major disaster is declared. And then we can apply for funding for the projects that we listed in this plan.
All right, is there any questions from council? Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion pass, six zero.
Thanks, Stacy. Item nine is consideration of a resolution to apply for State of Tennessee State Industrial Access Program. The council has applied for this in in previous years. This is a program to help us with the access road for our Highway two twenty-three site, which is receiving tremendous interest from industry. And so we have to have an additional resolution for this to help us with the access road for this site.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion pass, six zero.
Item ten is consideration of board appointments. At the NED Board, consideration of reappointment of Julie Cook.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion pass, six zero.
Jackson Municipal Regional Planning Commission, consideration of reappointment of Pat Ross and Christopher Edwards.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Harvey, are you voting? Motion pass, six zero.
Public Art Commission, consideration of appointment of Jamie Sanchez, Clifford Martin, and Ashley Eckerson.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion pass, six zero.
Legends Museum Advisory Board, consideration of reappointment of Jimmy Exum, Jimmy Duke, and Randy Williams.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion pass, six zero.
Jackson Recreation and Parks Advisory Board, consideration of reappointment of Robert Starr.
So moved.
Have a motion, second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion pass, six zero.
Housing Board of Adjustments Appeals, consideration of reappointment of Frankie Hayes and the appointment of Wilda Barton to replace Mary Tyler.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed, six zero.
Code Advisory Appeals Board, consideration of reappointment of Charles Garrett, Jerry Spoor, and Monte Cooper.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Harvey? Motion passed, six zero.
Item 11, there are no budget amendments less than $10,000. Item 12, consideration of invoices over $10,000.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed, six zero.
No other business coming forward to the council. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.